Yeah, I'll take that.
Then you have to sign it.
It's my walking papers from final check.
No kidding. Go copy.
It's cool. What was that, what did check for? Three thirty two point?
I think it was a double thing. Yeah, that was the double thing.
Okay. That was sixty one thousand dollars in bills. And everything's caught up?
Everything's paid off. To my understanding, except for like Tyler Tech and the auditors.
Till today.
Oh, yeah, till today.
Till today. But everything's caught up to date, basically. That's a good thing.
I'm actually excited about it.
I am too. Great job.
Yeah, it's really good.
It's awesome. I like it. Very few times you can come in and report that kind of things.
It might not ever happen again, but hey, today we can do that. Well, on the Tyler Tech, out of that remaining original balance, there's twenty nine thousand eight hundred twenty eight dollars left on the original.
On the back pay of it?
On the back pay of it. And then we got a bill for the new maintenance agreement that'll be effect from November nineteen, twenty nineteen until November of twenty twenty, October of twenty twenty. And that's for thirteen thousand six hundred twenty one forty four, which is due October the thirty first.
Are you all pleased with that service or direction you want to keep going?
Christina likes it. She's the one that works on it.
I hear some hesitation in your voice.
I think on this, Joey can probably agree, on the support side, Tyler Tech is not good at all.
Exactly.
All these other companies, you can call somebody and they're right there. Tyler Tech is not that great.
Exactly. You may be on hold for three hours, you may get a phone call back, you may not get a phone call back.
They charge you for every?
Every, yeah.
Phone call, every?
So after we get them paid off and up to, up to dating up the stuff and out of contract, you go, possibly?
Well, Hayden and I kind of discussed this briefly the other day. It's kind of like right now, we're stuck because we still have the outstanding indebtedness.
Yeah.
And then if we don't pay for basically the maintenance coming up, the maintenance contract coming up, we will have no support whatsoever because they will cut it off.
Once our contract been done?
Well, twenty, well, this, okay, the payment schedule they have made up for us, the thirty three hundred dollars for each month ends in June.
Okay.
But between now and June, we would have to pay each month on time, which we have been doing. And then, um, which will probably still give us support, but...
We'll also have to have the other twenty nine thousand picked off?
Uh huh.
Or you could have them made them. Dig deep and pay that off, you think, and maybe? Is there, is there another, what I'm getting, is there another cheaper company out there? Something more better, least get better for our money, or?
I have a quote, a previous quote I got back from CIC, the company they had before. And there's another company that, we've been talking with, right?
No, I know where there's a... Because Christina really likes Tyler Tech, so, I mean, and she is, that's what she works with every single night. So I don't...
So you got to be?
It's gonna be a hard, it's, yeah, it's gonna be a... So I don't know. I feel like, and JJ does too, so I kind of feel like, even though it's our decision, I feel like they should kind of have Sunset selling it because they work in it.
I feel like, kind of like we're stuck.
Yeah. And I know Christina did not like CIC. But, you know, so. I wasn't here, so I don't know.
Yeah, me neither. So we have that, so. Illinois Department of Enforcement Services will be back on November nineteenth to continue on the audit. There's a question about some, how the, we are moving, or how we are uploading to the system for our quarterly wage report. So there's some issues going on there, so he'll be back in November. I've got the correction for this, the rest will be in there, deal, that's fixed. And so I'm hoping to pay a few more of the bills that we have outstanding still like the on Tyler Tech and finish paying off the auditors report, auditors balance that we have still with this and try to save back some money for the renovation payment. See what else is going on. If something doesn't do any breaking, we have a couple of bills up there.
We're pretty too bad.
I have to take these side note and get them back to me. And other than that, I can put them through.
Not sure. I haven't, I haven't heard, but we probably need to, right? When you think? Say some while, while Joey's in here, would you like to go in a closed session and discuss?
I was gonna wait till Sheriff, he was here, a little bit.
Okay.
It's all right.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I asked him, I think it was nine twenty five Jeff or nine thirty, I think it was, whatever. Yeah. That sounds good. Yeah, we'll just wait until he changes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joey. Joey, come on up.
We're just gonna get, we're just gonna get both of, we're just gonna get both of you in.
Okay. All right.
Hi, Joe.
How's it going, Joe? How are you all? Kind of a couple of things to discuss. First, been the bid opening we had last week on box cover on Mount Sterling Road. The bids came in over the engineering estimate. It seems like everything's trending towards being a lot more expensive nowadays. The engineering estimate on the project was a hundred and twenty five thousand, more or less. And the bids came in, one of them at a hundred and seventy one five and one at a hundred and fifty seven three. So it's about twenty five, twenty six percent over, the low bid was twenty five, twenty six percent over what the engineering estimate was. I've had some discussions with the consultants on the project and also my local roads field engineer about the project. And, you know, they're, they both, or the local roads field engineer anyway, he thinks that even though it's over the estimate, that we probably ought to go ahead and just award it because you don't think that the prices are ever going to be any better. You know, the other option you have is to not award it and rebid the project. But unless we significantly change something in the project or get more bidders or something of that nature, it's not going to give you that.
It's weird, there's a twenty two thousand dollar difference in the...
Yeah. And the reason being on that is there's two different precasters that were giving these contractors pricing. And the one that bid the higher amount did not get the price from the second precaster. He only got the price from one of the precasters. At least the explanation he had been. I mean, as you can see, the main cost of the project is the precast docks and the precast wing walls. And everything else is improved.
That was basically all the difference there was, was the twenty two thousand, wasn't it?
Yeah, and there, I mean, other items, if you look at them individually, some are more, some are less. And it all washes out though in the end. That was pretty much the main difference, who that went wrong. So we got, in talking with Lance, who's my field engineer with Ida, he said we have enough money in the township bridge program to cover this, so it shouldn't be a problem there. We have to obviously pay twenty percent. That's how township bridge program works, is the township bridge program funds cover eighty percent of the project and our local funds cover twenty percent of the project. Our twenty percent of this amount is amounts to about thirty two thousand dollars. That's a little bit, yeah, it's probably just a little less than thirty two thousand, about thirty one something. So if we're all in agreement to go ahead and award the project to the low bidder, I'm gonna ask to pass a resolution to pay you the thirty two thousand dollars out of our highway bridge account. I don't know if you had any questions or wanted to discuss this any further or anything about that. Kind of is what it is. I checked on with the engineer about, hey, what do they, what would they? If we didn't do a box cover here, if we didn't bridge instead, like we've been doing, give me an estimate of what you think it would be. They came back and said, well, with a bridge, it would be somewhere around two hundred thousand. So this actually is, is less expensive than a bridge is by forty something thousand dollars. You know, it's just, these, the main part of cost on both bridges and this is the precast sections. When you get precast, pre-stressed bridge beams, it's the same precaster that's precasting with box cover. And they, they've really upped their prices in the last three or four years with little to no explanation. And I don't really understand why, other than they know they can get away with it because there are not very many of them competing out there. They're just doing it to make money. That's the only explanation I have. There, we can, and I've been talking to low bidder already about maybe where we can cut some of these things out of the project. We could award the project as is and then cut some of these line items out. Like, for instance, we've, we've got in the project to go ahead and coat, recoat what was disturbed with oil and chip. If they won't, if they do this project in the winter, they won't be able to do it through the spring anyway. So we can cut that out of the project and maybe do that with our own money, and it would be a whole lot cheaper.
About six?
It's about six thousand dollars we can cut out of that project. And there's also a bid item here of waterproofing the structure. A lot of times, you know, when IDOT does box covers and things like that, they do waterproofing just because IDOT saws the living crap out of their roads. And when you waterproof it, it protects the structure from deterioration. We don't use that much salt. Everyone thinks that we could probably do that. That would be a four thousand five hundred dollar savings. I'm not sure if it'd be worth it. It may be worth just going ahead and doing waterproofing. I will talk to the engineers more about that to see what they recommend.
We already got a double hundred forty seven thousand, we could do that and something.
Yeah. So.
Cut by twenty percent then?
And really, there's nothing really, I mean, it's pretty much a bare bones project. There's really nothing more to cut out of it. I mean, except the oil and chipping and, but we're gonna have, we're gonna be paying for the oil and chipping one way or the other, and whether we pay them to do it or do it ourselves, it's just gonna be a whole lot cheaper for doing it ourselves. Instead of costing six thousand dollars, it may cost us two thousand.
Unless it'd be the money we're saving.
But the, the way we can do is award the project as is and just not, not have the duties paid items so we wouldn't pay for the paid items. Perfectly fine, that's fine. That's, yeah, that's the resolution I want to pass to pay for the twenty percent of the project, uh, highway bridge fund.
Going to twelve hundred and fifty seven?
Hundred and fifty seven thousand three hundred and twenty one dollars.
One fifty seven?
Three twenty one.
If you take that ten five, uh... We'll be saving nearly two thousand bucks for that, on that twenty percent. If you cut every bit of it out. I'm gonna do the math there, is it worth the two thousand dollars that's on our side?
The oil and chipping, I definitely think is, I don't know about the waterproofing. I mean, waterproofing is just a nice little addition to the project to protect the structure, give it more durability and more life. So I don't know if that's really worth it. I'm all for saving money and cutting things out, but when it's something like that, I mean, it's gonna actually help you as far as getting some life on the structure. I don't, saving that amount of money, I don't think it's really that much worth it.
That's the difference in the twenty percent between cutting out the chipping and the waterproofing.
Right.
And you said it cost us two thousand dollars to do the chipping, possibly?
The waterproofing alone is forty five hundred dollars, so twenty percent of that is only nine hundred dollars we're gonna save on the waterproofing.
And then if you do the, do the six thousand dollar heroin?
So.
It's gonna cost us two thousand dollars. Okay, we'll figure it out, bring the two thousand up there.
So as far as today, if you, I'm going to have to assemble a contract and we will have to sign it and execute it. I have to send it to the contractors and sign it first. So as long as we agree to award it, I guess maybe we need to vote on awarding it to Samron, and then we'll, then we'll sign it in a different meeting. Whenever I get it back, get the paperwork back to them, we could do that in a different meeting. But I also need to vote on the resolution to pay for twenty percent of the project, so.
She did a motion?
Motion to award the project.
Motion made to approve Samron Midwest contract for a hundred and fifty seven thousand three twenty one?
Yes.
I make that motion, I guess that's...
I'll say it again.
And then also...
You may do your welcome.
Yeah.
Jason Farmer?
Yes.
Gerald Children?
Yes.
Then also, we need a motion made for this resolution has written, has been presented here for the amount of what, thirty two thousand? Being taken out of the county highway bridge fund, is that correct, Joe?
I'd like to know.
Rocko, Jason Farmer?
Yes.
Gerald Children?
Yes.
The other thing I want to know is, I like discussion on his oversizing overweight loads that's been coming through the county. And I've had some discussions with Jeff last week about it, because of state police and stopped someone and he gave him a ticket for having a two hundred and forty thousand pound load driving through some of our roads and on the state highways and whatnot. But I guess, I guess he ended up giving him a ticket because he didn't have a local permit to travel on our roads. It happens so often, it gets unbelievable. I do get some requests from trucking companies to issue them permits for oversized overweight loads, but by and large, percentage wise, probably IDOT, I think, for instance, IDOT has issued, I looked up through my email, they sent me a notice of when they issue a permit. Since June, they've issued like two hundred and thirty permits to go through our local roads system. And I think I've issued maybe, I think, twelve or thirteen permits this year on, on people actually calling and asking for them. So percentage wise, people don't call and ask for permits and ask, and I've turned down several permits over the summer of huge loads wanting to come through some of our roads that are just stupid to come through. And the reason why is because IDOT has closed the routes that are under construction to this kind of traffic. So for instance, while one forty five is being overpaid and overlaid, they're not allowing any oversized loads to go through there. So they try to shift them off on the local roads to get around their construction. Same with I twenty four, the bridge over Penchample Road. They will not let any oversized overweight loads go through that construction zone, a lot of construction is going on. So they route them off I twenty four onto the local system and try to get them back on twenty four. So we've had tons of these loads. And there's, there's been loads like this one that they gave a ticket to the other day, quarter million pound loads trying to go across like Jefferson School Road and Old Mary Road.
Whiskey Road.
And ignorant road.
They were, they was giving an overweight on elevated local structure, first to third to sixth, he was giving.
Yeah. So I'm really...
Did you check that road?
Yeah. I mean, I didn't really notice anything. And I checked the bridge too, and there wasn't any damage, a visual parent damage to Dunton Bridge. It's just that these, these loads are just, it's getting to the point where it's ridiculous and I don't know how to handle, I mean, I do, I use my, my judgment and, and, you know, the bridges that they cross. If they're actually crossing the bridge, I send their load configuration up to the IDOT bridge office for them to run it through their program to tell me whether it's okay or not. Nine, nine times out of a hundred, they'll come back and say, yeah, it's okay. I don't even know if they check it out there. I mean, they just don't want it on their system, so they put it on ours and they say it's okay. Well, that's all I've got to go by, and I do have it in writing, so if anything happened, we can go back on it. But at the same time, it's our system, and they're not gonna be paying for it when it does cave in or cause a problem.
That was a hundred and twenty tons going across probably a, what, a thirty ton limit?
Well, I mean, now these...
They had six axles or whatever.
These bridges are designed for the, you know, HL ninety three or the HS twenty loading, which is legal loads. But I, I mean, and they do have a safety factor on them, but I don't know how much. I mean, the way that their axles are configured and, I, it's, people have done masters degree theseses on the damage that oversized and overweight loads cause to roads. And, I mean, it's just such an unclear thing and it's how to calculate it and how to determine it. I mean, a load is a load and you can calculate how much weight is on a bridge at one point, kind of whether it's gonna damage the bridge, but you can't really quantify that for a highway or a road. I mean, I, I can guarantee you that these kind of loads are doing damage to the entire system, whether it be ours or the state's or the city's or whoever's. And it's never really quantified because people just don't know. I guess the dilemma that I'm, I'm facing is we're, we're getting more and more of these coming through. And a lot of these ridiculous loads like this, this, the same guy that got ticketed here, their origination is coming from La Farge this time, okay? They're taking some huge transformers out of La Farge that weigh this much. So they've got like eleven axles on a truck. And so they wanna go down, you know, say Portland Road, Grand Chain Road, Boge Road, and then out to the state system, and then maybe come back to our system somewhere else. That's, that's, in this case, that's what happened. Most of the time, if somebody requests for me to give them a permit and they're not crossing a bridge, I will go ahead and issue them a permit for it. Right, wrong, or indifferent, I mean, according to the law, the only statute of permitting oversized overweight loads, how I read it is that whoever has jurisdiction over the road, it's up to their discretion whether to give it or not to give it. Okay? I would be more apt to not want to give somebody a load if they're, say, traveling from Florida to Canada, they just wanna come through our, our town. But if they're originating at La Farge, I mean, how, what do you do? I mean, then you can't pick and choose, and that's kind of discriminating against people. So I, I don't, I don't know how to, other than just continue on the way I'm going. I mean, I'm trying to use the best engineering sense that I can so that it doesn't damage our bridges and do anything like that. But I'm getting tired of having to look at and issue it and worry about it. The other thing is, is cost, okay? When the state of Illinois issues them a permit, they charge them a fee to issue them a permit. We don't, we haven't ever charged anyone a fee to issue a permit. If we started charging, you know, we could set a, set a dollar amount based on whatever criteria, and I'd have to do some research as to how to do that. But the only way I know that we can even get that done is if we hired some kind of service or got our own credit card machine or something for where somebody can pay right up. You know, we can't wait snail mail to get, receive checks from people to do this kind of thing. It's just not, not feasible. So, and then actually having somebody to have to call all these people that don't call for permits is takes another, another facet, is, is it takes a lot of manpower to do this. And I mean, that's why I looked up how many permits they've issued since June, it's two hundred and something. So you're talking about an average of five to ten permits a week.
What does the state of Illinois charge?
I, I don't know. I think they charge, it's a sliding scale based on the amount of miles they drive across the state road or something like that. And I would have to do some research to figure out, but I'm sure it's a couple hundred dollars per permit is what the state charges whenever they issue them to, to somewhere near a thousand dollars if it's going on a lot, a lot of state roads. See, they have a whole department and, you know, twenty dedicated people in a system, and it's all automated that does this stuff. We don't have anybody. And I, although I would like to be able to do that, I don't know that I would, I mean, what, what happens when I'm gone today or if I'm on a construction project? And nobody else is in my office to even review these things. So I don't know, I guess I'm more talking to make you all aware of the problems that we're facing and I really don't know how to resolve that, I mean, in its completeness. The way that we've been doing it is the, the only way that, you know, I've known to review the ones that asked for it and, and get it done in a timely manner. And do all the rest of the work that I have to do at the same time.
What's the other counties around this area, what are they doing?
Well, I've checked with a few of them, like Williamson County.
The bid?
The bid, 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 bid.
Jesse, that, right there.
That's bid, yes. Williamson County, they use a system called court money to actually, they pay this this third party for permits and then they take their cut out of it.
So would that work for you since you're not in office, something, would that be?
It would work as far as paying for the permit, but they do not review any of the the routes or they don't, they're ignorant, totally ignorant to the fact of how many bridges are going over and.
Right, so what does this engineer do in that situation, how does this?
Well, he's got two assistants that work with him, but they got some people over there, you know, working to to stay on top of it if he's gone.
And you say assistants, are they like clerical people or actual engineers that look at it?
Now, some of the other counties like that are in our boat, like that just have a county engineer and nobody else, they don't even issue permits. I mean, like Plasby County, they're like, they're like, look at this stuff.
So usually when you find out about this, you need it immediately, I, I mean, the person like, hey, we're coming through right now?
Well, and that's the thing, we don't know when they're coming through, they give a window of like a week, the state does, so you don't have any idea if they're coming through at eight o'clock this morning or three thirty Friday afternoon, I mean, and you can't sit out there and wait for them, I mean, that's just, it would be totally impractical.
Good job for the sheriff.
I guess if anyone has any ideas of how we can address this, or I was, I was even thinking about, you know, setting a a limit to what we actually will permit when they ask for it, like, you know, some of these really heavy loads like you're talking about, unless they originate from our county or being delivered to our county, I would say no, on any of those, no, just no. You can't drive on a state road, you can't be on one. But I don't know what that magic number would be, you know.
Weight wise?
Weight wise, yeah.
What's the tower of roads up there, Cora?
I mean.
Especially in the middle, especially in the middle of summer, whatever it is. The roads a hundred plus degrees and it's soft anyway, I mean, it's.
One of these loads that that I've denied some loads going across Jefferson School, Old Marion Road and Marion Road. I've denied like three or four of them and I told the state to block those roads because they they can't make it in that, on that route. But here, I think, I don't know if I still have the picture, I'm, that's what I'm looking for when I'm talking. There was a load that went through there that tore a huge gouge out of the pavement, yeah, that's it right there. It was clearly an oversized load, it couldn't make the turn, they drug their load boy.
It was about six inches of.
Tore a huge gouge, it was about eight inches deep and about twenty feet long out of our oil and chip road, okay? This is, you know, nobody saw the truck, you don't know who it was and what happened, and we didn't permit anybody to go through there, so what we do, we have to go out and fix it, you know, I mean, this is just one instance where we know they damaged the road. How many instances are there where they just damaged it and rut it up and everything else and if we don't know about it? So, I don't know. I'm done preaching, I guess, I just wanted to make you aware of some of the dilemmas we're facing and if anybody's had any ideas as to what they want to see done or how we can do something different, I'm all ears. But with the personnel that we have and the system that we have, I don't know how to do anything different than what I'm doing right now. There are, you know, some local people ask for permits, you know, like they have a, they ask for permits, a blanket permit, a yearly permit to carry their equipment across the county doing all the work, because all of our roads are oversized overweight, so we issue them that a year. Some of the other local people, when you, when you take an excavator anywhere, anybody that transports an excavator requires an oversized overweight load, so. So we do that for people that actually are from here and travel our roads regularly as well as people from out of town. Anyway. You guys have anything for this?
I'd be, huh?
And thank you very much, talk to y'all later.
They damaged, I think, people's mass sack of material trucking.
I'll go see that guy.
We got his number, can we?
Sheriff's want to go on?
No complaint on the building.
Good. Awesome.
Can't have much complaint with one piece.
That's right.
Something else I wanted to give you is not exactly, I don't think, what you want to hear, that is the surfer estimate for the elevators.
Oh, man.
Yeah, we've got employees volunteering to put on biohazard shakes and find them down there for half that, but you still, you know, the risk. Those are the only ones we've been able to find so far, I'd be willing to do something like that, it seems pretty high to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's me. So only what I can get right now, that seems a little steep. Nasty job, but we're gonna give them a go ahead, that's just the assessment for the effort, I'm gonna bring it to you and see what action you want to take next, if you wanna table it for a little bit and think about it or see if there's somebody else you can come up with.
Maybe we can.
Check around. We mentioned biohazard and bird waste and dead birds, it kinda turns people off.
Sure.
Did you get your new vehicle? Yes, we picked it up yesterday, took it to Jackson Purchase to get equipment burnt out of that Tahoe. As soon as they do that, we'll take the Tahoe back to Linwood with the title, but we did, we did pick it up, they did honor the deal. And I was able to pay for it with the funds through our less old count, vehicle fund, so it's not a, not a line item purchase.
Right.
And Linwood did take a hit on it, I'd say, but they did honor the deal. Yeah, they stepped up.
What did Eddie Beck do for you?
Eddie Beck come in, we had a clogged sewer line.
Okay.
Perhaps I'm in my office, matter of fact. Put trustees on it all day to try to get it.
Yeah.
And after a long, hard, messy, smelly day.
Yeah.
We called Eddie Beck and he had it fixed very quickly, he did, tried to get it done free labor, but it didn't pan out so well.
Well, you tried.
But Eddie, Eddie got it fixed right back up. That sewer system happens every once in a while, usually from the, from the jail.
Yeah.
But that's happening fast.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Actually, I'd like to answer the session for personnel.
Okay.
Close session. I'll make that most.